My son has got this, it'll push the first college expenses. He's got every moment in his life. It's no big deal right now. Well, yesterday he heard of the single children permanent home. And then, a long time ago, he worked on my husband's album. The University of Minnesota.
Are you ready?
So, uh, we can get started.
Yeah, otherwise it's going to run out of time.
Stay calm. Because he may not want to go there. These are really good values.
I'd like to call the special meeting for the Albany Unified School District Board of Education. Work study on Strategy Two to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Stapleton Gray. Member Blanchard. Member Lowe. Vice President Black. President Rosenbaum.
And we need an approval of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. And that brings us to our work study. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum, trustees, and all of our participants tonight. Thank you so much for being part of our Strategy Two update. Normally, when a school district does a strategic plan revision, it is usually staff presenting to the Board of Trustees the updates on Strategy Two. We decided to shake things up a little bit, and with, in similar keeping with Strategy One, we wanted to have different stakeholders engage in a conversation around what does it mean to educate the whole child, which is our Strategy Two. And as I'm a firm, firm believer in shared leadership, each of the strategies are being facilitated by a staff member. So in Strategy One, Dr. Ted Barone facilitated, and tonight, we have Tammy Benau, who is our vice pres- prince, vice principal at the high school, and she is going to talk about the process and facilitate this discussion. So I'm going to invite trustees to find their spots at the tables for this discussion and turn it over to Ms. Benau.
Are we assigned?
You are.
My name is Carson. Yes. Robert Gellman. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna explain the activity to you and familiarize you with the materials. My teacher looks. Alright, so I'm gonna familiarize you with the materials and the procedure that we're gonna use tonight. The first thing I'd like you to do is turn your name cards out so that everyone else can see your name. Because we've deliberately designed mixed groups to, to engage the, to engage you in the conversation with a little bit more diversity. So at each table, your, each, let me, let me, here we go. It's Mary Soul. Aye. Alright, so what you have in front of you is the agenda, and let me go quickly through this. Alright, so the, the plan is that at each table, we are going to have you engage in a creative discussion about how different sites, elementary, middle, and high school, attempt to meet the needs of each child, each individual child. And we've presented you with a scenario for each table. My understanding is this is the high school table, correct? So if you look on the second page of the agenda, there's a scenario that says "high school." You see where that is? The third page? And then, this is the middle school table, and you see your scenario there at the bottom of the second page. And that is the elementary table, and you see your scenario there under elementary, correct? Okay. So I'm just orienting you. So what we're gonna have you do is, in your small groups, look at the scenario of a student, a hypothetical student, and then on top of that, you have materials in the back of your agenda, the last two pages, which outline different types of interventions and programs at the different sites. So it looks like this. Assessment and intervention, and then there's something that says "student intervention options." And that's just a list of some of the things that are offered at the elementary, high school, and middle school. Now, the tables are mixed up with high school, elementary, and middle school teachers, counselors, and students. At each table, you have a representative from that grade level. So Deborah Brill is for the middle school, right? And Terry Georgetown is represented for the elementary, and Ted Barone is represented for the high school. So they're also a resource for you to use to try to figure out how you might help the student in the scenario. And if you look again at your agenda, um, so in a minute, we're gonna have you read the scenario. You know where the resource page is about all the interventions at the site, and we're gonna ask you to answer question number two. So if you look under "essential questions" on that agenda page, it says, "What do students need to be, need to succeed given their unique circumstances?" So we're asking you to answer that question for this particular hypothetical student at your table. And we want a discussion, a creative discussion, not just grill the principal at each table to give you the answer. So the goal here is to, is to engage you in this creative discussion and to also give you the experience of what it takes at each site, what the daily life activity is of member, of staff members at each site who attempt to meet the needs of each individual child. So the first one will spend 30 minutes, then we'll break for a second, and then the second, I'll stop you, I'll give you a time, and then the second attempt, the second question, small groups discuss question one. We're gonna ask you to come back to everything you just talked about and generalize for all children and answer question number one. What do students need to succeed in general? So you'll start with a specific hypothetical, and then you'll generalize. Okay? Any questions? Alright, and while you're doing this, we have three people writing down notes from your discussion. They'll be listening in. Alan, Cynthia, and Val will be writing down notes. Okay? Alright, begin.
Yeah, I just went down and I have questions about. And that was actually one of my questions, but no community connection.
Where, where are the little pieces of the classes? No, like, don't remember the last question. Why don't I go down each one? I'll note if you read it, that I maybe wanted to know more about things that I might have made assumptions about. So, just to give something, a little information. You will make that about 625, 370, depending on the time of year. We see the dominant number of students with this scenario. So they want their assumptions higher than they actually like to achieve disorder. They moved to some of the situations that are most common times when you're related. Right, when you see schedule, we're beginning to lay off this. So that feels, and no community connection. I kind of changed it perhaps a little, depending on the time of year. A lot of times, if their language is Korean or Chinese, they're gonna find some other folks back in the village, you know? That they're gonna make some minimal connections. So I kind of changed it to less years. And over the course of the year, you know, some connections have been made. When I saw it says limited learning experiences, it's actually a little defensive on the safety. They can also have some significant language. Capabilities. So the language may be strange. But in English, they're gonna be, they're gonna be very, they're gonna be, they're gonna be level to one language, and that's probably, they're already struggling a little bit. Although, normally, I have that information. I really know, I wouldn't wear a look, or it hasn't been brought to my attention, other than maybe grades, or some type of incident of the language. I can't read it, so I don't take the time and mind all that out sometimes. The thing that I really want here in getting to what you said, assessment, and I think it leads to what you're also talking about that, is how does that initially get identified? Who is noticing that time? And to the point where they seem to spend a whole hour to either the district, or to the principal, or to the key teachers of the council, like reading them on age, saying where that child needs. It tends to be the best place overall. Or that's our responsibility to assess, or where's reading one. It could be the parents, it could be the parent that's. But remember, they want the job they can take, just be thinking, just not think it's 13 to 14. So, really hard, I guess. How does that get done? Because also, lots of.
But we don't want to assume, because they're reading it of course. Sure, they're, they're not passing a judgmentary test. We could be, we could be, it's generally a communication that they're struggling with, or they're just a matter of. So kind of, it's a student's life, but anybody can call students, trust them, and they don't get together. This is a familiar profile.
Yeah, this should be particularly clear. The self-school, have, whatever, one of the first things I raised here is. And that's because. So, so it's not like one person's responsible. So I, I, I'm curious. So I want to know, I want to know more about how this self-schooler, you know, like. Yeah. So I'm actually, I feel like, I get, I see, and I'm listening, and everything else, it's a process. Is it just that? Or is that about someone sort of people? Yeah. The fact that lots of, or lots of students, their families may be split. Not important for them to be with one parent and have the other parent on country. Or to have them sometimes be here with a different relative of life for the opposite. So it does vary very, 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 a lot. So this would be a problem that would make a lot of merit. My question that I have next to it was, so how is this? A lot, it's not a big deal, because that might be something that's really apparent, but it may be a type of.
Well, with some. I'm curious. How typical is that? I think that's a very important question. The kids with.
In combination of all these factors, but I would say. I would say.
Student needs really important, they got choose their own table. What are some of the questions that come up about this? Is it the account, the council, the society?
I feel like. I don't know. I don't know. Typically, somebody like this, their, their knowledge of various aspects of this. I don't know. My coaching, my process. I definitely like to talk to the educator and everything, but like, that's.
Right now, we have a process to identify.
Well, yeah. It's hard to like. Because like, I, I don't know, it's just. I don't know. I don't know. Especially if I've seen that picture being a senior. I also wonder if there is, as well as being there, people looking at you like, chat rates. Accidentally, now, it's like. It would sound.
Sounds for not area. Jordan, Eric, seventh grade at Albany.
I, I, that's one of the. That's until my seniors. But then, do they, are they using, are they using the train? Or is that. Sometimes I'm a little bit interested, because I've lived in some areas where I did my training in the last couple of years. I'm watching more, I learned some, so I know more. So, I'm really curious on whether.
So, when we think about this, some of the things we want to do, what are, what are this, what are these statistics? General, in general.
Understanding the point of reference.
Where they need to be, where they're given needs, which is.
That's important to be able to feel the how. So it's how do you.
Seeing the kid back in the process.
Should we, should we first see, is he trying to do that?
How age, that's.
And all that stuff.
About how, how, how we really. Especially with the same. We have a population, this is their. This is their world, this is their experience. Would it, would it, I'd be curious what. Were there, was there any indication that the district had a job, they appreciated, and they supported, and they extended, and they eventually made friends and concentrated in this class?
There were caring, trained people. Who were just.
Like, what is here, but I think often happens.
To some extent, which might be a weird. Or would be a slot. But. That to me is an ideal situation. Or.
Connections with, you know, teachers that are paid. So it never seems to be. Like. It might be somebody which supports, maybe. Yeah. Yeah. But, you know, when I think about this kid as a closer relationship, they're sort of as a, like. A lot of these kids have all stayed in positions to high school sports, and we're lucky that someone's taken, or got their.
I just look at, you know. I just look at, you know. But I do have access to. Has probably, you know. The, the, I mean. Or the student, you do always have those, you know, students who are in the class, who, you know. Or what, you know. They told you, they know the school, or you know, how they come together, and what they said. You know, they're together for their. And then they come on. They don't want the. But they're truly creating community. You know, choosing the ones that need them all, you know. Kids, you know. Success is how much.
It's great that, that, I think the teacher might go place the person. Their initial likes, or somebody.
That's kind of like the last word, I think, or when the teacher's. Kind of. Like. It's more, more.
One question that I'll, I'll.
To your point about. It's important to give one of the things. I think speaking to that, like, I support that. So, I think all that is because of the. Some like. Language. For someone, yes, and it's one of the intense. Teachers, I've tried to find, teachers, they're the students, or somebody is. So I do have Korean, Chinese, Spanish. There are some. Staff. Email, honestly, tends to be the best way, because they, no matter what their language is, they can take that email or print it out, take it to the neighbor, take it home. Yeah. And that's how we're taking it. So, even though email is more few, less personal, sometimes you really have to reach. Email. I imagine that individuals making that. That there. They have to really test it. I don't know. What's it to you? Over time, this year, brought back something you tried a few years ago, and that is kind of burgeoning up families, so we just have the families that come in and try to let them, and the family here. They don't have to be, they have to be the same language, they just have to be available to help that kid. We try, if we can, to try to get their, where their kids are around the same age, or maybe the same gender, with the hope that there might be a connection. Relationships, relationships. Family support, really, really, relationships are key. And I think, I would, I would eventually say, that the relationships are, can be, to try. And especially a child who are regular, lack, lack from the way this is written. What a child is doing relatively okay. Was, relatively okay, up until some of the. We tend to catch families, but they first get here to, to the parent, and they tell them, you have a relationship beginning in the year. Also, I think coming to where your child wants to be eligible for a four-year. For some reason, a child that doesn't have interactions, and so. And it can become a relationship, and, um, you have relationships that are strong. Really, very. Puts out, to start popping, to be a natural partner. That'll die, as well. That's really good.
At middle school, which is scary.
Are there any programs?
And he's already made access to. So how do you make that transition possible for a kid in fifth grade?
I know we're focusing education.
It has to go to middle school. And it's not a close will be. I've got to make it.
Well, I'm just thinking like, maybe fourth grade, but definitely by fifth grade, you're like, be like, just really self-conscious and like, ever really in first grade, I may really friends with this time when he's back tomorrow, like, everyone's really excited. But that's the thing with us, like, that's what, yeah, that's what you do, but like, back to third grade, you're like, talking more and it's more like, maybe like advanced types of interactions, I guess. Instead of like, I feel like this is small, so it's really good to be beneficial for someone that's starting to be.
So I know we're socially oriented, but I already, like, we were through the country and then, like, so much people, right? Know each other.
Some of these things, like, kind of more socially.
Or the.
That a student in distress should have access.
We believe in everything.
Or should believe that there is a caring adult at the school, meaning that they serve their.
It's a great question.